Don't laugh.
I can't help it. I could be, I could resemble that remark. Um, Mayor wants to do the, um, short-term internal presentation discussion.
Please sit down, you're late.
I'm sorry.
These people are saying you took two minutes of their time.
Test, test.
They all, they all work.
Let's call this meeting to order, please. Does anybody have any special intentions? Deacon, Rapio, would you lead us in the invocation? Councilman Wilmot? Councilman Wilmot, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Is there any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda. Item one is approval of minutes. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permanent applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2219-20, South Lake Villages, to hold a public gathering on October 31st, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the purpose of a Halloween gathering in the 200 block of Cotton Bay U Lane. Item four is correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor's office.
Mister Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Um, my comments will be brief. I know that's odd usually lately for me, but we will do a few comments on the hurricane. So, as we all know, we are still recovering from the short-term effects of Hurricane Zeta, uh, one mile per hour short of being a category-three hit us. It knocked out more than 26,000 households of power and other utilities. It toppled trees and power lines throughout the city of Kenner and elsewhere, too. Just so you know how much we have to deal with with debris, anywhere from 75,000 to 150,000 cubic yards, which is equivalent to 2,500 to 5,000 roll-off dumpsters, is what we're expecting to pick up throughout the city of Kenner. That has been estimated by two debris removal teams. I, I met with all of you all and told you at the EOC that we would trigger the portion of the IV contract to remove, um, debris through the city of Kenner. There's a clause in the IV contract that allows me to do that and debris collection also. We also did it with another local company, Risk, tree removal service. It is a fraction of the cost of the national companies, so we're going to save some serious money with what we're doing by doing what we're doing with IV waste and Risk. The PSC is who we're working with all through the storm, which is to continue to work with them. And I want to give a shout-out to our Public Service Commissioner, which y'all know he was around the city of Kenner a lot. He was in, he was in a lot of his district, but he was in the city of Kenner a lot. And I appreciate Eric Scametta's help because working with him and Patrick Hamby, and I said this to numerous TV stations and radio stations, the night of the storm, before the storm, and after the storm, that without those two gentlemen, I think we may still be asking for power in parts of the city of Kenner. Very few were still without, and last night, something happened with someone hitting a pole in Councilman Brennan's district and District 5, Platt and Joe Yenney, and that had nothing to do, people lost power, that had nothing to do with the lack of power and why they lost it. It's because of them hitting the pole. So, nothing related to the hurricane. When we talk about debris removal, it is a hot topic in the city of Kenner, and I'm actually a little puzzled by some of the calls that we get or the comments we get because we are ahead of the curve for sure with picking up debris throughout the city of Kenner. I've spoken to each and every one of you all, if you made the agenda meeting, to tell you all what we're doing. So, just a quick run-through, and most people should know this already. I know you all know it. I'm, you know, I'm not trying to insult your intelligence by telling you again. I know you know how it works. But the large debris in the city of Kenner, big, big woody waste, fence boards, things like that, and trunks, are the things that we're picking up with the claw truck. Our Risk picks it up when they cut the tree down. They take it away. IV waste absolutely positively was instructed by me on Saturday evening, ignore the debris for right now, pick up the garbage starting Monday morning and Sunday and Monday. Why did I say that? Debris doesn't stink. Garbage stinks. So, people had a lot more garbage than normal because they were cleaning out their refrigerators because they lost electricity. I mean, I, look, it's, it's just common sense. So, I absolutely told IV waste, ignore the debris, pick up the garbage, ignore the recycling, pick up the garbage. Put all your, all your trucks on the street getting the garbage off of the streets of Kenner so it doesn't stink. They were so far ahead by Tuesday because they worked, on Tuesday evening, because they worked to 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, that they started picking up more things today. They have picked up some debris in, in the middle of that, but they're picking up more recycling now. So, I for one have my recycling can out for tomorrow because I think they're going to pick that up. The large stuff is being picked up by Risk and also the claw truck. The smaller items are being picked up, and when I say smaller, it's still debris, it's still a lot, is being picked up by IV waste. So, IV waste is picking up our garbage plus the smaller items, smaller to medium items. We've had some people call in and say, but they passed my house up and I got bags by the debris. Is it large debris or small debris or medium? It's large. Okay, the bags will get picked up with the big debris because it probably has stuff in it, and it's, you've seen what residents do, they put everything out together. Everything's in one big pile. So, those things might get picked up with the claw truck with a bag. Other bags may get left because it's with smaller debris. That's going to take another truck to come out, which is the debris, small, medium size. A lot of information. I know it sounds confusing. Here's, here's the bottom line. Just be patient. Be patient. We are very, very far. I'm not going to call any other areas out, but we started on Sunday. They've worked till 10 o'clock at night up until, maybe they will do it again tonight, I don't know. But up until Tuesday or Wednesday, they worked till 10 o'clock at night. Other, other close areas that are close to us are starting debris removal tomorrow. So, if someone's complaining to you, just ask for their patience. Ask for a little patience with it and cooperation because probably by this time next week, probably, the majority of the city, if not all, will be picked up. I think we're doing really, really good. I appreciate y'all's cooperation because y'all have been fantastic when I've explained this to you all. Um, we did a PSA with Sidney Torres today. I think it's already playing. Um, out by the debris site where some woody waste is being dropped on our property by the break tag station, Public Works. The old break tag station, I'm sorry. Public Works. Um, we did a PSA to inform the public what we're doing. We'll do more. Uh, I think we'll be doing some more outreach very soon to explain where it's going and how we're doing it and how we're getting it done, but your cooperation has been fantastic. Your cooperation during the storm was fantastic, and I truly appreciate it, and so does my administration. We've had some recent comments again about recreation. Um, I, I've asked Chad Pittfield, as you did Councilman Carroll, about two meetings ago, to come back with a report. We've been working on a report. Um, I think we could have probably waited one more council meeting, but I think with some other comments and just to let the, uh, the residents know where we are, I think it's good to bring us up to date on recreation. It'll come back to me if you just give me a minute just for him to say a few words about recreation because I think it's very important. Uh, myself and my, and my CAO, Deborah Foshee, did a telephone report to the Jefferson Business Council tomorrow on lots of things. This, COVID, and also recreation, how the city has remained open. Well-received by the Jefferson Business Council, Mr. Tim Coulon. I want to thank him for inviting me to do that. They get it. They understand what we're doing. Myself and Deborah both got a lot of, um, good comments from members of the JBC, so I appreciate their cooperation on that also, and like I always say, people are going to get what they want to get. The JBC's got it, and I think that's really good when our business council of the parish understands the direction the city's going and how we've been doing things. Chad? His mic's loud. You want to use mine? Chad, just come here.
Move over to the empty seat next to you.
So, instead of this, we're asking you to have this coming Monday where we will have our part-time fully available playroom in the information room. Um, we will move forward from that political brand mask program and go to play and so forth in the gym, but I need to get those personnel back and to assess, uh, the facilities. Uh, you know, they're going to go through and definitely make sure all the lights are working, ACs are working, and that kind of stuff. So, um, give us a week or two, we'll start bringing masks and go to play in the gym, and then we'll start scheduling and programming, and that's all. Uh, the same thing for our gymnastics, our floor, we're going to, we're going to work and train those personnel back, cleaning all the equipment, making sure everything's really good, all the progress, getting trained on what they need to do. It's obviously making the necessary checks and so forth. Same thing that happens in coming this week. So, it's going to take a little bit to get our staff, and we're definitely on the right path. The mayor, um, and he'll give us the, uh, the board to deploy back and program back, and, and, um, so, if I have any questions.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you. Thank you, Mister President, and thank everyone for being here today. Uh, Mister Pittfield, thanks for that report. As the mayor alluded to in the beginning, that this was something a couple of weeks ago we asked about. So, thanks for that because obviously, as we in the state of Louisiana, particularly the city of Kenner, adjust to the numbers which has hit our community hard, the COVID, that is the number-one priority, to ensure that we provide a safe space for our children and everyone else. That will always be a priority until we are through this. So, that is, that is where we are right now. As we get more people back to work, as we identify what are the options that we will be able to do, it may not be 100%, but it will be something that I would hope two or three days a week that we can do at the facilities, and I'm going to speak particularly for District 1 now and let my colleagues speak for their area. But, uh, this is, this is, the children are now back to school, so that, that means they are cohabitating with one another. So, the ability for them to do something together has been established already. It is our responsibility now to provide from a recreational standpoint that what we can do. And as the numbers for the state are addressed and we get more information from the governor and as we get more information from the parish president, from the mayor, we will have to adjust accordingly. So, I look forward to the opportunity for us to do more for the city of Kenner as it relates to recreation and leisure services. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mister President.
So, Council Chairman, you finished with the field?
All right. Um, I want to do a shout-out because a few council meetings ago, we did have some, you know, parents that may have been a little upset about how we were doing things. Ms. Patty Glazer, Glazer, with numerous conversations with the school, has sent an email, numerous conversations today, has sent an email in support of what we're doing and understanding because obviously they've had their own issues and other schools have had their own issues, too. So, I do want to do a shout-out to Mr., to Dr., not Miss, Dr. Patty Glazer with Kenner Discovery School for her support on the move that we're taking and how we're doing things to keep the kids safe. That's all I have, Councilman. Um, if anybody has any questions for me?
Council President? Councilman Segura?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, on the mayor's report on the trash pickup, I would also like to point out from being, you know, aware of what's in the contract, how important it is to keep our trash and woody waste separate because we have so much woody waste material to pick up. If it is picked up with garbage, that's at a higher rate of, that we pay to dump site, correct, Mayor? We pay to dump site by the tonnage for our garbage pickup, but on the woody waste, we pay by the, the truck. So, it is important that they are picked up separately to save the city a considerable amount of money in this great endeavor of trying to clean up the city fast.
Very, very important point, and I did skip that because I was just trying to get to how we're doing it to get the constituents' front yards picked up, but I do appreciate you pointing that out. It's true.
Councilmember McKinney?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to clarify, um, I have had some calls about debris. Um, is the debris drop-off point still open and functional through Monday?
Thank you, Ms. Goff. I didn't hear it.
Is, is the debris drop-off, um, on Friday through Sat-, Sunday, is that still available? And can we still, um, can, if residents want to drop things off, is that still available?
It is. Go ahead.
Yes, it actually is, and it also was open this past Monday, uh, additional day. We're evaluating, I think, if any people, like, you know, by standing in front of the wear, uh, but we are considering that and possibly we opened up at the residence and debris drop site at 24th and 25th. So, we extended out, I mean, we're hoping that we can do well. So, the only thing I want to add to your, thank you for hearing that up, is absolutely important. We are trying to keep the debris separate. The only thing I want to add is, obviously, if it's leaves and tiny leaves and tiny plants that we understand and need to put that in plastic garbage, but if it's twigs and small pieces of actual woody waste, please leave it loose. We're shipping all of this. If you go over to the old transportation one on 24th Street, we have a pretty nice system set up over there where we're feeding all of this woody debris and chippers and the chippers are they, um, dis- dis- disbaring down, chipping wood into our whole container. The plastic bags cause an issue. They get caught in the chippers, and if you can't chip it off, please do not put your twigs and actual woody waste in plastic bags. The only thing that we're watching.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
That will conclude the consent agenda. If I could get a motion in a second?
We have a motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKinney, to approve the consent agenda. Will vote by roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Motion passes seven-zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings for final passage. Item nine A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,754 and ordinance adopting superseding and amending operating budget for the city of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending July 30th, 2021, and providing for related matters.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to open the public hearing. Council members, let's vote.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero to open your hearing.
Is there anybody from the audience wishing to comment?
Uh, my name is Greg Teff. Um, live at 3720 West Loyola Drive in Kenner. Yeah, I have a few things I want to say about this because I, after listening to and watching the last meeting regarding the issue, I have, I have a problem when we fail to understand that employee retention is a very important aspect of any operation, whether it be city government.
Mister Teff, excuse me, if you'd get closer to the mic.
Uh, and when you have an individual that demonstrates and works outside of their job description, does many other duties that not even within the job description, and does them well, then, then that, having someone to be promoted and offered an increase is not unreasonable for anything. We're, we're kind of, to keep those good employees. The other thing is, is we got to understand that when this is all over, this pandemic, and our employees could become marketable very quickly, especially those that are achieving above and beyond. Don't think other government entities or other businesses don't know that. And they will go in and they will solicit those people to go to work for them, which again hurts Kenner because Kenner then loses someone that went above and beyond and can do a good job. I also want to point out the position of the, that the, that this individual is stepping into. We waste an awful lot of money for things that fall through the cracks. I mean, we, we were paying for a company to empty trash barrels that didn't even exist or that was being handled by somebody else, another company. That should have been caught, and a good compliance officer would catch that. And I've said many times that we need someone doing that function because you, there's too many things going on, and somebody needs to make sure that this was done. If we have an outside contract, for example, was that work completed and wasn't completed to our satisfaction? And not just signed off. You know, we went through that with the fire chief some, some years ago where we wasn't paying for bills that were due. So, I just want everyone to know that, one, I am, I am support of this, but I'm also in support of, we need to recognize those individuals, and we should offer opportunities, growth opportunities for all of our employees, especially those that have shown the desire, the interest, and the willingness to look out for our great city. Anybody have any comments they would like to ask?
Councilman Wilmot has his hand up.
Councilman Wilmot? Yes. Thank, thank you, Mister President. Mister Teff, as far as pay raises being given or promotions?
Mister, Mister Wilmot, it's hard to hear you. You might want to pull your mask down.
Thank, thank you. Is that better?
Closer.
As far as pay raises or promotions are concerned, wouldn't you think it'd be better for those persons who are going to get those new positions or pay raises? Don't you think that they ought to come before the council? That's my question. What do you think about that?
Okay, Councilman Wilmot, I do have an answer for you, and you're exactly right. It should. And it should, and it should be transparent, but...
Exactly.
But, wait a minute. Don't, don't back off that quick. We are in a pandemic. Things change. You can't always go through the proper channels. You can't always go through every little move. In this ordinance, it, it outlines that there is an increase involved. There's nothing hiding it. It's there. So, yes, if the council votes for this, then they are voting for that increase.
Many of these...
So, it is being, it is being brought forward.
Mister Teff, I'm sorry, but your three minutes is up.
Many of those predate...
I'm sorry, sir. I have to leave because my three minutes are up.
Most of those pre- predate the virus, so just letting you know before the pandemic. So, that is an issue. It's, it's how it's handled. It's a procedural flaw. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll has his hand up.
Thank you, Mister President. Mister Teff, uh, I, I guess I'm going to answer also to your comments because you and I, you know, we've been, I've been seeing you for many years coming to the council. We've always had a college relationship. We agree and we don't agree, but that's what this is about as it relates to everyone else in this building. Sometimes we're going to agree and sometimes we're not. I, I, I received your email and I responded back to you, and one of the comments that you made that I really took, you know, I guess, I had to, I had to correct because I think your comment was, uh, I get the impression that some council members don't recognize the significance of employees' retention. So, I, I kind of took offense to that because at the last meeting when we discussed this, I thought my comments, I thought I was clear with my position, what I felt, and as it related to the employees. So, i- i- I thought I was clear, but obviously sometimes it, it's not always. So, I'll just like to read my comments in my email that I sent to you so that way you and I, everybody know you and I, you know, this is just my position on this, this is yours, and you are entitled to that. But I just wanted to be clear about my position as it relates to the employees of the city of Kenner. And I said, it's, it, it reads as, Mister Teff, thank you for your comments and concerns for the city of Kenner. While you are entitled to your own conclusions... While you are entitled to your own conclusions, and I'm not sure if your opinions of my comments at the ten sixteen meeting has led you to believe that I do not recognize the significance of the employees' retention. I assure you, if so, and with all due respect, your assertion would be incorrect. I not only recognize the significance of all employees, but also their skills, dedication, and institutional knowledge. With that said, my vote on the ordinance will not change. Thank you for your continued, continued support to the city of Kenner. I look forward to speaking with you at our next meeting." So I just wanted to show that we disagree, we understand our positions, but I wanted to clear up, to make sure that you understood how much I value the employees that work for the city of Kenner. Thank you, Mr. Teff. Thank you, Mr. President.
May I have a chance to ask?
Mr. Mayor? I think Mr. Teff has something to say, but I also wanted to include Mr. Teff in this. Mr. Teff, has something to say?
I, I just wanted to say that you're exactly right, but I said it was my impression, listening to what was said. I gave what my impression of that was, because I watched it three times to make sure I was getting the right impression. And yes, you're right, but we can candy coat a lot of things by using other words, by saying all employees and, but we zeroed in on, on this individual, and that's what I'm referring to. Because you're right, you did say, we got a lot of good employees, and you want to make sure they're all treated well, and I agree with you. But again, we zeroed in on this one position, which again, I brought that position up at several council meetings in the past. And unfortunately, this is a position that, when I saw what it was, it's dear to my heart, because I've seen too many things fall through the cracks, because we don't have an internal process to make sure that everything is paid the way it should be, and that employees are trained the way they should be, because you see that with the civil service problems, because departments sometimes either take shortcuts, or maybe they don't have time to do the proper training, but if you have a good compliance officer, guess what? It gets caught, and those things get fixed. And that, that's my whole thing about it. This position to me takes care of a lot of sins, and could take care of a lot of heartaches, and, and save this city money. I'm a taxpayer, so every time something goes awry, it comes out of my, I pay for it as a taxpayer, or part of it, my share of it. And that's all I'm saying. And so I can't say anymore about it, because like I said, it's a position to me that I felt was needed a long time ago. Thank you.
Let, let's everybody remember, discussion, three minutes. Mr. Mayor?
I just, in answer to Councilman Wilmot's comment, and also what Mr. Teff agreed with, and I think this is why he was agreeing with it, we are before y'all. It's called a budget. So we bring the budget before the council, in case anybody's watching this on TV or in the audience, we do have some audience members with us today. We do come before the council for this. It's in the budget for you to approve. You chose not to vote for it last time. Hopefully this clears it up, maybe you'll vote for it this time, because we are doing the process that we're supposed to do. We're here before you, the council of the city of Kenner, and the executive branch is sitting here asking for it to be passed. So I don't, I don't know what we're, I don't want to mislead the public with comments like we aren't following what we're supposed to do.
Thank you. I, I thought about this last time and didn't say it, and, and I just feel compelled. I understand everyone's entitled to their impression or their opinion of this, but I think something that Mr. Teff said resonates, and that's, the work that some of these people are doing, and many, many employees in the city are doing, is being noticed by other people. And if someone gets, if someone gets approached by another business, and they say, John or Mary, we want you to come work for us, that person's going to go to their department head and say, I've been offered another position with another company, or whatever it would be, and you're paying me this, and I need this, because that's what they're offering me. And I don't know that we have time to put it before the council and to come and say, well, you know what, John or Mary, give us six weeks so we can get it on the agenda, and we can meet, and we can discuss this. And then it becomes public that John and Mary are going to work, and if the company gets notified, it, it's a little different, I think, than a private entity with someone going to work for another company and, and, and working for a private company. There, there has to be some latitude, there has to be some, some flexibility. And again, I think what the mayor is saying, we, we approve the budget, we see the items. And I think we also, hopefully, see the work that these people are doing, and seeing improvements daily in what these people are doing. And that's just not the ones that are up for raises. It's everybody. It's everyone. Mark Llorioso responds to text messages and phone calls so quickly, no matter what he's doing. So we've got a lot of good people. We need to keep them, we need to keep the momentum going forward, and that, that flexibility has to be in the hands of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenney, did you have a?
Councilman Carroll has his hand up, and I believe Councilman Segura.
Yeah.
I was just pointing out that Mr. Morel was up to speak.
Go ahead, I'll take your time, man, I got all night. I'll stand here all night, I'm going to be heard. Go ahead, go ahead, say what you got to say. I'm giving you the floor. I can wait up here, I got the problem.
That's, that's my deniability, Mr. Morel, to give me the floor.
I don't have no problem with that.
Okay, so, Mr. President, thank you very much. I just wanted to, to say, Mr. Teff, thank you for our conversation, and that my, your observation was my perception, and perception is reality. When someone says, I got the impression, then that leads me to believe this is what you believe, this is what you think. So that is why I had to respond to you based on your impression and my perception. But that's, that's just how it is, and I try not to ever, never, never candy coat anything with anybody. We may not agree, but I'm going to tell you how I feel about it, and then we either going to ag- agree to be, to disagree, or we're going to move it on. So I will never candy coat it with you, short and sweet, this is what it is, hopefully have a valid reason, and sometimes I change if you present something that's, that's sufficient enough for me to change. So I just wanted to make clear that you and I had a disagreement, I disagreed with your observation or your impression, and so now we move on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Segura, did you have something?
Oh, no, I was just pointing out that Mr. Morel was there waiting to speak, and the council's already had their...
Mr. Morel?
Y'all ready for me, but thanks for the consideration, Councilman Segura, I appreciate it. Al Morel, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifth district, forty-eight years, y'all can hear me all right? Okay, first of all, is this an increase in our operating budget? If it is, I'd like to know what the, what the budget is now, and how much is the increase? I like figures, I like numbers. And second, I've been saying it for over forty years, and I'm going to keep saying it, our employees are the most valuable resource that we have. Without them, we got no government in the city of Kenner. Now, I'd like somebody, anybody, to tell me what the operation, operating budget is now, and if it's an increase, what is the amount of the increase?
Am I on? Can you hear me?
Nobody wants to talk about the money?
Al, I'm trying, they're just trying to get my mic on, hold on.
Ms. Foshee?
Is it on? They're trying to get her mic to work. Is it on?
Pull it towards you and get close.
Turn it both directions.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Morel, oh, there we go. Can you hear me?
I can hear you all right, talk a little louder, just a little louder, Mr. Foshee.
I'll do what I...
I know you got, I know you got stronger vocal cords than that.
I'll do, I'll do what I can. So, Mr. Morel, you're asking questions about the revenues and the expenses, and while I believe you're asking them overall, I want to first address just the payroll. We have reduced payroll expenses by more than one million dollars, and these adjustments increased by a hundred and fifty thousand, so the net decrease to the budget is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In pre-COVID, we had a seventy-two point oh four million dollar total revenue outside of transfers and enterprise funds. For this year, we're estimating sixty-five point four, so that's a six point six four million dollar decrease, which is nine point two percent. In terms of the expenditures, overall, we're projecting a three point eight, three point one eight million decrease in total expenditures over last year's budget, excluding transfers and enterprise funds. The proposed capital budget for this year is four point three three million, as compared to last year's three point nine six. This reflects a transfer in of eight hundred thousand dollars of undedicated general fund money, and the transfer of the auto rental tax capital to recreation capital. And Road Village also has a special revenue fund, and that has been transferred within the capital budget. So overall, our fund balance is actually up, which is one of the things, as you probably know, that our bonding companies are looking at to make sure that we have a solid fund balance. Our fund balance at this point is seventeen point five million dollars, and I believe our minimum is seven, Mike? So we're ten million over the minimum that we're supposed to have. Now, this contains a, a big chunk of CARES reimbursement, Mr. Morel, so we have to come up next year, like, we're good all the way through June, but starting in March, when we are starting to do our new budget, we are going to have to identify some additional funding sources. Additional funding sources for the police, additional funding sources for the fire department, and additional funding sources for public work. So right now, we're talking about this budget, which is an amended budget, and it's just to get us through our COVID year, but we can't, we can't act like this is the end. We have to project out next year, and the year after, and the year after that, and that's what Mike Wetzel's sitting over there does all year, every day, and we're working on that now. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, Ms. Foshee, I, I like numbers. You know what, I like numbers, and I'm sure a lot of people in the city of Kenner like to hear those numbers as well. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't like to just see some writing on the agenda with no figures.
Understood.
We want figures, and now, there's a lot of people back here like me, who don't have none at our high-tech office.
Uh-oh.
So I like to get it from the heart of my mind.
Okay.
Thank you, man.
I'm glad to give it to you.
Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
I have to apologize to the audience. I put on every councilperson's desk tonight this order of debate decorum, and it states that a councilperson should only speak once on the question, and I think we've had some other people up here speaking more than once. I'm not going to allow it again. This is what, I spoke to every one of you all personally today on this. This is not a debate for us at this point. This is a public hearing to hear what the citizens of Kenner have to say. I'm not going to recognize you again. You, this would be your third time speaking on the same subject.
You have to recognize me, sir.
If there is a debate, it's on the next one, coming up.
I have a comment, I have a, an answer to your, to your, what you said, I would like to comment on what you're...
Let's just read what it says right here in section forty-two point one.
I, I've, I've read it, and I've read it many years before you was here, I read it. But my position is, even with that, we can call a vote from a council to give a person additional time to speak. Now, we can go around that road, or we can respect everyone up here, which I have been respected since I've been on the council for many years ago, to let the councilperson speak on behalf of the people they represent. I just wanted to let you know about that. Thank you, sir.
What we have here is, is there any other comments from the public? A motion by Councilman Brannigan, seconded by Councilman Segura, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, let's vote by roll call.
Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to close your hearing.
A motion by Councilman Brannigan, seconded by Councilman Segura, to move this to the floor for discussion. I don't even think this is necessary at this point.
It is, it is necessary.
I'm not calling for a vote on this.
Well, we have two items we have to clear up.
We have to have a vote on this.
Mr. Chairman?
He has two items before him we have to clear up. There's amendment...
That's coming next.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, can we introduce the amendment? To substitute the pages in the budget as per the request of the finance director, Mr. Mike Wetzel? If we could entertain that amendment? That would be your first amendment that's on the floor tonight.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Segura, to substitute the pages in the budget. We vote here.
Yes, sir. On the amendment to substitute pages, Councilman...
Could you, could you please get closer to the mic?
Sure. Councilman Wilmot, on the amendment?
I, I don't know what entails in the amendment.
The administration has requested some pages be substituted. Mr. Wetzel may be able to explain it a little bit further?
I would need explanation.
There's no substantive pages, it's really just charts and, and graphs and things like that, table of contents, page numbers, all of that.
It's more demonstrative, it demonstrates.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
No problem. Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero on the amendment. I also have another amendment at the request to remove section six...
Correct.
...on the ordinance. If I could get a motion in a second, I believe it was at the request of Councilmember Wilmot...
Correct.
...to do that amendment, sir. Motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan, on the amendment to remove section six. Councilmember Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero on the amendment.
All right, let's please vote now on the ordinance as amended.
I, I have comments that I'd like to make.
I have comments.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Why don't you remove your mask?
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Yeah, I do have comments, and, and I know we already hashed this out at the last meeting, but I, it's a new day, so I wanted to revisit this, and I know we have ten minutes, it's plenty of time, so I'm not going to ask that we extend that. But do keep in mind that when we do hear the budget, we usually have three days of hearings on this matter, or up to three days. So here, we're trying to push it through, and, and I think that's in haste, and it's wrong. We need to take our time. If it takes each councilperson an extra five or ten minutes, so be it. It's not a big deal, this is important. This is fiscal matters, this is what we're here for, this is the city council. Wow, we're supposed to hear these things, not shut them down. So this is frustrating. I think it's wrong, and we need to take our time. So that being said, I do have a problem with the operating budget, and as I said last meeting, our jobs as the council is to look at the fiscal matters, and that's what we're supposed to do. I have an issue with the operating budget, and, and I want to voice that, so here it is. Promotions and pay raises, which is it? Doesn't matter. You're increasing the benefit to an employee, a supervisory employee, not just a regular employee, but a supervisory employee. When that happens, it follows different protocols. But you got to remember, in this, these days, we got decreased revenues, we're during a COVID pandemic, and I get it, if you got employees, and, and bless them, I, I think our staff has done extreme, our administration has done real well, and I don't knock anybody. I think, I think we got good people in Kenner, we really do, we got good workers, good supervisors. That's not my issue. My issue is procedural in nature. I believe that the city charter, specifically section two point three, I'm sorry, two point one three F, supports any increase in pay for supervisory positions must be handled by specific ordinance only. Specific, not the budget. We need to have something come before us, other than the budget. something come before us other than the budget. This body is being currently stepped aside in this process, and that's what I got a problem with. We need to be a part of the process, and I think we're being omitted. The Attorney General's opinion dated back in February ninth of 2011, issued to the city of Kenner, not to somebody else, but to the city of Kenner, states in pertinent part, "Any increase in compensation, including extra benefits, for any employees of the city of Kenner with supervisory responsibilities can only be accomplished by a special ordinance adopted by the city council pursuant to extended publication and delay, delay provisions of section two, one, three of the Home Rule Charter of the city of Kenner." By not coming before the council, there's simply no transparency, no citizens' input, and this is a lot of reoccurring taxpayer dollars that are being invested and spent. I understand that during the course of the last year, there's been six promotions, and of those six promotions, it's going to increase annual increase in our budget one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is an average of twenty-five thousand dollars per employee. Keep in mind, it's a probably increase because you got retirement benefits too to consider. I believe that this process on promotions or pay raises is flawed, and that there should be, I will just simply not be supporting this budget based on that reasoning. So that's what I have to say, and I appreciate everybody's time. And again, this is important. Got to get it right. And Mr. Teff, this is the reason why I was opposed to it. Not, not the employees themselves, it's the process. I'm unhappy with the process. I just think it's simply wrong. Looking at that AG opinion from 2011, things need to be done differently. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
I want to read the first sentence on rule forty-two point one. "Other than the purpose of asking a question, no member shall speak more than once on the same question except by unanimous consent of the council." For that reason, I'm going to call a motion at this point.
I have to, I have, I have to speak, give my comments. You cannot ignore me.
You can only, again, I'm asking everybody, and this was passed out, and I discussed this with you all this afternoon. You can only speak once. I'm calling the motion.
No, I have not spoken yet. I haven't spoke on this. I have not spoken on this particular subject.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think you have.
No, I have, I spoke in the, in the comments from the, from the audience, not on now that has been called to vote on. I have not spoken on that.
I call the question.
No, you cannot call attorney. I have not spoken. He cannot stop me from speaking. I have not spoken on this. This is a whole new section.
Again, I think this is really for the people in the audience to speak. This is not time for a debate. This is a public hearing.
This is not the public hearing.
This is not, we already had the public hearing, sir.
He hasn't spoke yet.
I have not spoken.
I'm trying to remember all of it right off the top of my head. This, you had the public hearing, and at that point in time, councilmembers spoke during the public hearing. Probably during the public hearing, this is on the whole, or the citizens of the council not have to take back and forth conversation. You are now in the portion of your debate, which is the time when councilmembers will speak. And so, probably on a broad basis, the public hearing portion of the, of, of these ordinances is not a time for the public debate between the councilmembers and the citizens. It's the point where the council here is citizens' conscience. And so, at this point in time, subject whatever time might be left of the dependents, I would believe councilmembers have the right to speak.
Well, the way I read this, it says, "Other than the purpose of asking a question, no member shall speak more than once on the same question except by unanimous consent of the council." Now-
Councilmembers, that's why I said subject whatever of this ten minutes is left, because this is the opening spot for your debate while councilmembers are stuck during the public hearing. This is the portion of the, of the debate of the council.
All right. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, sir. We took the long way to get there because Councilman Hayes cannot stifle anyone up here on their responsibility to speak. He, what he read is part of it, not all of it. The point I was trying to make was, I spoke during the public hearing. That was one section. Now, we're getting ready to vote. It is my, it is my, if I want to, speak again on it. That's what I'm doing. It's insulting to think that I have to explain this, because I shouldn't have to explain this to anybody up here. But sometimes you do what you have to do. So I digress. And I will say everything that Councilman Wilmot said, but I say this last meeting, and, and that's what I respect. Mr. Teff and I talked about it. I addressed it verbatimly on every point. So I'm not going to go over that again because I am not going to support it, and all for the reasons that Councilman Wilmot said. But just to be clear again, my comments will be short to say that I support every employee for the city of Kenner for the job that they do, not only during this pandemic, but even before that. I support increases for employees, particularly for the people who are making less than ten dollars an hour. We have not moved fast enough on that. So not to address that before these other increases, to me, is not right. We should address those individuals. That's what I said the last meeting, and I'm making a point of it again. I did not agree with the process, as Councilman Wilmot said, at the last meeting. I still don't agree with the process. So, those were my points. That is all what I wanted to say. But to be try, for, for, for Councilman Hayes to try to stifle me from saying this is the first time I've ever experienced this. I can appreciate him wanting to keep this meeting moving in a timely manner, but never, never, never at the expense of me saying what I have to say as a representative of the people, and that will never happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Baer, want to remove your mask?
Sorry. Only if the council's finished. I didn't want to interrupt the council. I didn't know if you were calling a question. But I just want to throw a few comments in. Councilman Wilmot, you're a hundred percent correct. We didn't have three days of hearing. You had a month and a half to look at the budget. You've had the, you've had the budget. This council has had the budget for a month and a half. So yes, it was in three days. I've been here for four years. This is the fourth budget. I've never seen three days of budget hearings. I was on your, I was in Councilman Hayes's spot many years ago, and that was the longest time we had it was one day and a half. Now, if other councils have done something different in the city of Kenner's history, you've been here longer than me, Councilman Carroll. I don't think that's ever happened. But for three days, you're right. We had it, you had it for a month and a half. I think some of the comments, or we've, we heard already, and we appreciate those, but this has already happened. Remember when you were making this vote today, and I didn't say this last time, because what's important, I didn't know how the vote was going to go down. But now that I know, and it looks like the crystal ball is telling me it's going to be the same situation again, remember what you're saying, Councilman Carroll. I totally agree with you. But a vote against this operating budget is a vote against a two percent COLA for, which is, I'm not going to say it's a raise, but for the public to understand, a cost of living adjustment, that's also what you're voting against. So you're voting against the everyday worker that's out there, our civil servants, that also, with this administration, your secretaries, your assistants, these civil servants out there, you're also voting against them. So remember that. When you think about, think about everybody here. Two percent to everyone could be a lot. And I think to some of our civil servants out there, the guys and the ladies that are on the street, the guys and the ladies that are doing things throughout our city, that's an issue, that you're voting against that. I could go on. There's a lot more. But I think that's really, really important. We're talking about, and I'm not calling a COLA a raise, but when you're talking about raises or salaries, they're also getting voted against.
So I want to address the mayor also to, to his comments.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, thank you for those comments, and I appreciate that. And, you know, you're right about, about where we are now and what's going to happen. But to my point, and you helped me make it, I was opposed to the process because the process should not have included everything in one bundle. It should have been for, for the raises for the regular employees, and then that should have been separate, and, and Councilman Wilmot and I position about those increases. So if it would have been separated, then I would have had the opportunity to vote on, on those, for the employees, and then vote separately for the, for the management raises. And because it wasn't separated, then, you know, sometimes you have to, to be able to, to address and get, and get your, your points across and get where you're at. But never would I want to vote against anyone getting there, because it, it's not going to happen. It's going to pass. And I understand that. Nor would I have been drawn to do this if it was a chance that it wouldn't. I, I would have just said the same words, but I would not have voted against it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
But you have the, just an answer to his question. Every councilperson, it's not all together. It's different items on the agenda, on the, in the budget. You know this, Councilman Carroll. That's when you, that's what we call an amendment. That's what the council calls an amendment. If the council chooses to make an amendment and amend certain people out, that's how it's done. And that, and you know, I'm, look, council, let's be fair. I'm not the first mayor to put everything in one budget, right? So you've, you've sat through numerous mayors. I mean, you've sat through more mayors than me. You know that it's all put together. It's different line items. It's up to you all. If y'all want to to amend certain people out of the budget, feel free. That's the duties of the council, just like what you had before you was the duty of the mayor. I mean, sometimes I think I hear, and I think Ms. Oshie said this last time, y'all want a city manager. You don't want a mayor. That's a whole different story. If that's the case, that job will be up for grabs, because I'm not no city manager. I'm the mayor of the city of Kenner. But that's what you, that's, not you, Councilman Carroll. I apologize. Councilman Wilmot, I think that's what you want, because you want to take some of the powers of the mayor's office and put it in the legislative branch. I don't think we need to have a civics lesson, but maybe we do.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, I call the question, please. I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
Do I have a second?
Second. Madam Clerk?
Second to call the question, Councilman Branigan. Motion by Councilmember, yes, sir.
No, he made a motion. I seconded.
Yeah, Segura seconded.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to call the question. Councilmember Segura?
Yea.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yea.
Councilmember Branigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yea.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Nay.
Councilmember Carroll?
Nay.
Motion passes five two. You got a pen. Back to your original motion on the ordinance as amended. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilmember Hayes?
Yea.
Councilmember Branigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yea.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Nay.
Councilmember Carroll?
Nay.
Councilmember Segura?
Yea.
Motion passes five two. Item nine B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-five, an ordinance adopting and superseding and amending capital budget for the city of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
We have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, let's vote.
Councilmember Branigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yea.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yea.
Councilmember Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty, East Loyola Drive, fifth district, forty-eight years. Same question. Is this capital budget going to remain what it is now, or it's going to be increased? And if it is, same question as the item above.
Sorry, Mr. Al. This is something I read a minute ago, because I, I kind of put operating and capital together. So if I'm repeating myself, I hope you'll forgive me. The capital budget, the proposed capital budget of four point three three million for 2021 includes technology and software. It is up from the prior year because we have actually added a transfer of a number of funds, the capital for the, the fire department and something else. I can't remember, Mike. Recreation. That's correct. There's a dedicated millage for recrea, dedicated tax for recreation that's been moved into the capital.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Oshie.
You're welcome.
Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? We have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, for approval. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilmember McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item nine C is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-six, a third supplemental bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed thirty-five million dollars of sales tax refunding bonds, a series two thousand twenty of the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of a general bond ordinance prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
We have a motion by Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody wishing to speak?
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak or address this matter?
Natalie, we haven't voted to open the public.
We have to, we have to vote on it.
Oh. Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
You're now on a public hearing.
Again, do we have anybody wishing to address the council? Hearing none. Motion by Hayes, seconded by Councilman Brennan, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero to close your hearing.
Motion by Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to approve.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero. Item ten is open in a bid. We have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. Item eleven A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance number eleven thousand sixty-two. ordinance number 11,062 adopted by the city of Kenner, Louisiana on March 17th, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the city of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending and rezoning Lot 6A, square 100, Veteran Heights subdivision from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R3, 3 and 4 Family Residential and directing, authorizing, empowering the planning directive for the city of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the city of Kenner.
Motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura to open the public hearing. Councilpeople, please vote.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Motion passes seven-zero to open your hearing.
Any people wishing to speak? Mr. Dufour, do you have any comments on this? Why don't you try to use somebody else's microphone? Again, I have to apologize to everybody. This is not a way to conduct a meeting. Next time we meet, we're going to do it in a different location, I promise you. This is not satisfactory. I can't hear. If I hear every other word, it's amazing.
I'll be, I have a brief presentation. Lot 6A fronts Veterans Boulevard, generally bounded by 27th Street to the south, Huntsville Street to the east, and Panama Street to the west. The lot currently contains a two-story building with associated parking lot and is used by the Department of Community Development as the Annie Washington Resource Center. Currently, the building is vacant, but is used for storage and occasional meetings and is in the process of being redeveloped or renovated. In September of 2015, the property was rezoned from General Office to RR3, 3 and 4 Family at the request of the city of Kenner Community Development Department to establish the Annie Washington Resource Center for transitional housing and supportive office space. However, six months later, when the council adopted the Unified Development Code on March 17th, 2016, Lot 6A was inadvertently included in the rezoning of land along Veterans and was rezoned to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, which does not permit the Annie Washington Resource Center. Therefore, the intent of the proposed rezoning of Lot 6A is simply to correct this error and rezon 6A to RR3, 3 and 4 Family Residential to allow the Department of Community Development to operate the Annie Washington Resource Center. The Planning Commission recommended approval for this rezoning. That concludes the presentation.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Motion passes seven-zero to close your hearing.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura to approve. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to personally thank the administration and thank Michelle for their hard work on getting this building reopened. It has been dormant. It has been vacant. It has been in bad shape for a few years. So, the opportunity to open the building, to open it up to the community, particularly for the Veteran Heights and Susan Park, I mean, it could be for anyone, but those are the communities that's going to reap the benefits directly because they live right there. So, once all of the construction start, the opportunities to open this building up for other things, we will address more. Michelle is looking at that because it can be like a multi-purpose building. There may be other things to do, but we look forward to this building right there on Veterans Highway to be able to offer to the community and quite frankly, to the whole city of Kenner, police department, fire, and everyone, to be able to pass information on, to be able to support those other entities that support the city of Kenner, and this as a vehicle to pass information on. So, thanks again, the administration. Thank you, Michelle. We look forward to the building. Thank you, Mr. President.
If there's no further discussion, councilmembers, please vote. Councilmember Brennan?
Yea.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yea.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero to approve item 11A. Item 12 is all the ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 12,757, an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,757 adopted August 6, 2020 to delete the word annually from section 1.
Motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Brannigan to approve. Let's vote.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero to approve item 12A. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution appointing the members of the alcoholic beverage permit review committee.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to approve. Let's vote.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Motion passes seven-zero to approve item 13A. Item 13B is a resolution requesting that those utility providers that have franchises with the city of Kenner, Cox Communications Louisiana LLC, AT&amp;T, and Entergy Louisiana Incorporated, appear before the council of the city of Kenner at the next scheduled council meeting to provide a report on the damage caused to the utilities they provide and the status of the repairs to those utilities.
We have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to approve. Let's vote. Councilman Segura?
Just real quick. This resolution is in light of this past hurricane. We know everybody's had issues with their power, their cell phones, and their internets, so we're going to ask that each of these utilities send a representative to our next council meeting so we can talk to them and get explanations on the problems they had and their plans for the future to hopefully not have such a bad downtime for particularly phones and internet. Energy is whatever the damage is, happens, and they've got to repair it as quick as they can, and they do do that. But these other utilities, we need to hear from them to understand what their problem was and what are they going to do to straighten it out in the future. So, that's what we'll be doing at the next meeting. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,758, an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana Office of Facility Planning and Control for Lincoln Manor subdivision drainage improvement, FPNC, project number 50-MF1-20-01 for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot to approve.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney? Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,759, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive proposal from Beacon Air Conditioning in an amount not to exceed $9,998 to replace a shorted 30-ton compressor on the main chiller for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to approve.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Motion passes seven-zero to approve item 15B. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,760, an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase for parts and labor in the amount of $12,736 from Covington Sales and Service Incorporated for the Department of Parkwayes.
Motion by Councilman Brannigan, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve. Let's vote.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yea.
Motion passes seven-zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions and summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and approving amendment number one to the fiscal year 2020 annual action plan for the proposed community development block grant in the amount of $434,252 for the community development department. Item 16B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Christmas Village LLC to supply Christmas lighting as needed in accordance with letter bid number 20-1965 in an amount not to exceed $25,000 for the Department of General Services. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Notico Industries to purchase materials to repair office trailer in accordance with bid number T20-2776 in an amount not to exceed $6,983.95. Item 16D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Crow and Associates doing business as Crow Slit Turf Services to provide ditch spraying in accordance with bid number 20-1961 in an amount not to exceed $15,000. Item 16E is an ordinance amending chapter 15, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 2, Section 15-21 of the Kenner Code of Ordinances to add stop sign at Champs Elysees at its intersection with Rue St. Peter. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees. Item 18 is new business. At the request of the Finance Department, the clerk will read a public notice regarding the April 24, 2021 election. This notice is to advise the public that the Kenner City Council intends to vote on resolutions to authorize the calling of special elections for the renewal of the levy and collection of special taxes in the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana. The Kenner City Council will vote on these resolutions at the council meeting to be held on Thursday, December 3, 2020, beginning at 5:30 at the Punch Train Center, 4545 Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, 70065. The tentative date for this election is Saturday, April 24, 2021. The resolutions that the council will be voting on, the Kenner City Council intends to vote on the resolutions to authorize this calling of a special election for the renewal of the levy and collection of special taxes in the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana, including the following. Item 1 is the renewal of the levy and collection of a tax not to exceed 7 and 40 hundredths mils on all property subject to taxation in the city for a period of 10 years, beginning with the year 2022 and ending in the year 2031, inclusive with the estimated amount reasonably expected to be collected from the levy of the tax for one year being $4,094,237 for the purpose of constructing, improving, equipment, maintaining, and/or operating fire department buildings and facilities, for acquiring, maintaining, and operating fire department vehicles and equipment, and for paying salaries and benefits of the fire department personnel. Number 2, the renewal of the levy and collection of a tax not to exceed 1 and 61 hundredths mils on all property subject to taxation in the city for a period of 10 years, beginning with the year 2022 and ending in the year 2031, inclusive with the estimated amount reasonably expected to be collected from the levy of the tax for one year being $890,773 for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, maintaining, and/or operating garbage collection and disposal facilities and/or services in and for the city, including salaries and benefits of garbage department personnel. And number 3, the renewal of the levy and collection of a tax not to exceed 1 and 14 hundred mils on all property subject to taxation in the city for a period of 10 years, beginning with the year 2022 and ending in the year 2031, inclusive with the estimated amount reasonably expected to be collected from the levy of the tax for one year being $630,732 for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, maintaining, and/or operating the city's wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system, including salaries and benefits of sewage department personnel. The Kenner City Council will vote on these resolutions at the council meeting to be held on Thursday, December 3, 2020, beginning at 5:30 PM at the Punch Train Center, 4545 Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, 70065. The tentative date for this election is Saturday, April 24, 2021. Item 19 is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from the table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. President?
We have...
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify one little point. I know the mayor brought up a comment about my opposition to our operating budget, and he mentioned that we need a civics lesson. I just want to say that that was uncalled for, of course. It's a difference of opinion, mayor. I believe I'm right. You believe you're right. It's procedural in nature. It's healthy, good debate, and I think we have that difference of opinion, and it is what it is.
I have no problem with a difference of opinion, but you, in your first comments, you were very adamant about the whole process is flawed. This should be done. We've come before you. You're misleading the public. So, if you're misleading the public, is my position, just like your position is, you're probably not, but my position is you're misleading the public when you say those things. I have done what the charter of the city of Kenner allows me to do. If the Attorney General, Attorney General questions, and I have not seen that, what date is that?
I've read it earlier.
Well, no, what date was it? I wasn't listening.
It was February 9, 2011.
So, since 2011, the charter has been around a lot longer than that? I've never seen that. I'm not familiar with that. If that's something we need to look at, but it all depends on how the question was worded to the Attorney General. The Attorney General has also said to the city of Kenner that agenda meetings should not happen. Agenda meetings are happening throughout this state. You as a state representative, a former state representative, I'm sure you had some meetings with some of your colleagues. So, there's many things that are asked of the Attorney General. If the question is phrased a certain way, the way you want to get it, that's the way you get it. The Attorney General, I'd be willing to speak with the Attorney General and see if he has a problem with our charter, because our charter allows me to do what I'm doing. So, look, is it a difference of opinion? Absolutely. I don't think my comments are, are misleading. I don't think my comments are wrong. I think my comments are what you call a defense. So in the city of Kenner, that's the way it works. You might be looking for a charter change. I don't know.
Yeah, it's not a charter change. In fact, he interprets the charter and it makes it clear, in my opinion, that it needs to come before the council.
Okay, well, we can agree to disagree.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters. The first person I have is Mr. Ernest Clark. Is that correct? Ernest Clark?
Earl Smith.
No, I'm sorry, sir. We have to go in order. I'm sorry. So the next person would be Jakia Clay. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, Jakia.
Good evening. Jakia Clay, seven oh seven Clay Street, Kenner, Louisiana. The question is, what is going on in our community? There are many eyesores in South Kenner. So the next question is, what are we going to do? What are you going to do as city representatives? We've come several times expressing our concerns for South Kenner. Some work has been done, but there are many things that need to be done in our community. So the question is, what will be done to rectify these horrible eyesores? What is going on with the vacant property at Reverend Richard Wilson Drive between Farah and the cemeteries? No one seems to know the answer. Why is the eyesore of Kenner High School still blank? Lastly, we have come to the council several times about our parks. Bestie Hammy Park have no swings and holes in the picnic tables. Our kids don't have a decent place to play. The question is, what will be done?
Next in line is Barbara Soniat. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Barbara Soniat. I reside at three fifteen Poet Place, Kenner, and I represent the Old Kenner Civic Association. I previously addressed the council January nine, twenty twenty, to draw attention to several concerns and issues affecting South Kenner. Of course, the COVID-nineteen pandemic disrupted a lot of plans, including our plans to continue to follow up on getting answers to questions that impact our community by regularly attending city council meetings and addressing this body. We don't intend to go away until our questions have been answered and until we have been provided opportunities to participate in discussions and planning that impact our community. This evening, I want to focus my remarks on two of these areas of continuing concern. The development on Reverend Richard Wilson Boulevard between the cemetery and Farrell Street and the burned-out school building, also on Reverend Richard Wilson Boulevard. Specifically, we are requesting an environmental impact study for the development on Reverend Richard Wilson Boulevard before any further clearing or construction is done on the property. Additionally, we are requesting a status report on plans for eliminating the eyesore remains of the Old Kenner School. Today, approximately twenty acres of trees have been cleared with apparently no consideration having been given to the impact of tree removal on air quality, increased risk from wind damage to surrounding properties during storms and hurricanes, and the effect on flooding and drainage issues surrounding the community. The only way to mitigate potential further damage and environmental risk is to inform the community of what is being planned, consider and address concerns of the community, and implement strategies to minimize negative impact of these developments on our community. We're also concerned about the types of industries and businesses that are being planned for our community and the impact on the quality of life of residents who currently reside in this community. We believe we have a right to know. OKCA has requested notification and inclusion in discussions about the major developments in our community. It's called the Neighborhood Early Notification Conference. We sent a letter to the City Planning Department on August twenty eighth...
Ma'am, your time is up. I'm sorry.
May I request to continue? About, should we continue?
Yes, ma'am.
I may continue. Thank you. I've been blessed with a spiritual gift of patience. However, my patience is running thin. As I reflect upon this, there are only two things I can consider. Either I'm being lied to, as I'm repeatedly told, that our mayor, our city council, zoning, planning board, and city departments, code enforcement, economic development, community development, nobody knows what's being planned? Either I'm being lied to, or a lot of people are not doing their jobs. As our civil servants and representatives, it is your duty and responsibility to know and monitor developments in our community. That is the role of the planning department. That is the role of zoning and code enforcement. That's what you're supposed to be about. It's hard to believe that a developer can clear trees from such a large area without having to apply for a permit stating the purpose and plan for the clearing. I trust that there are some other explanations that is just I'm not able to grasp. I trust that there is a third alternative explanation, and that you'll share that with me today. I trust that you will convene a meeting in our community to let us know what is going on, and I trust that you will halt any further development until there is an impact study of the Richard Wilson site and until the community is informed about what's going on. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, ma'am. I didn't want to cut you off, but we are going to have to limit everybody to three minutes.
Reverend Kenneth Price. What, what is your name, sir?
Earl Smith. And I'm the president of Old Kenner Civic Association. And I'll be brief. I think Ms. Soniat and Ms. Clay have stated the specific items that we wanted to discuss and wanted to understand what the city's position is on it and bring some clarification to the community. We have a councilman, Mr. Carroll's our councilman. Mr. Carroll does not appropriately, let me say that, respond to what our needs are. Now, I have suggested more than once that Mr. Carroll call a community meeting for the district or for the area in question, and let us provide some questions to him so he can give us some answers. We don't have answerers. I'm a taxpayer in the city of Kenner, been there for forty years. I've never missed a payment. And I love and I've invested in Kenner, still invested in Kenner and in my community. And Mr. Carroll has represented me now for almost nine years, isn't he? And it's hard for us to have a, a community forum so that we can ask basic questions. The issues that, that's raised by Ms. Soniat, those are humongous issues that soak glaring, but basic things like cutting the grass, trimming the trees in the park, fixing the garbage cans, just basic things that anyone would expect. I drive through the city of Kenner. I don't see that kind of conditions in any other council districts as it is in District One. It's just a shame. It's a, it's a crying shame. So, Mr. Carroll, you spoke with me and I, we know one another, and you know how I feel. You are not doing the job. We are, we are taxpayers. Don't you get paid by the taxpayers? Don't you have a budget? You do have a voice. You can speak to us. You can call a meeting. You know our numbers. You can call a forum. We'll provide a place if necessary. But we need to hear from you, because you represent this district, and it's time to let us know. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. I want to thank also Ms. Soniat, Ms. Clay, and Mr. Price. You know, you address. I thank you all for coming out and speaking as you have. I thank you so much, in my heart. And now, I'm going to end. Thank you to, to the council, the mayor, and the chair.
Thank you, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Reverend Kenneth Price, five thirty-nine Salvador Road, Kenner, Louisiana. I'm going to be very short. I like to just hit these points. When I entered this building, I noticed that we opened up this meeting as people of faith.
Sir, if you'd get closer to the mic.
We open this meeting as people of faith. And it says that we ought to love our neighbor as ourselves. But it's strange to me how in North Kenner, we don't see broken roads. We don't see commercial buildings in residential areas. And yet, you say you care about South Kenner. That's not caring about South Kenner. Everywhere we look, there's new commercial construction going up where there should be residential areas. What about affordable housing? And yet, you say you care about the people of Kenner. You say you care so much that you, you feel the workers need a raise. But what about South Kenner? They need to be respected. I'm going to say this once. We are not going to take it anymore. I live on a street where it hasn't been paved in over thirty years. We cross over tracks and tearing up our cars. And yet, you say you love us. And yet, you say we are equal. I say this to you. We're not going to take it anymore.
Claudette McGee.
My name is Claudette McGee. I live on seven oh nine Salvador Road in Kenner. And my complaint is the water that's coming in the area when it floods back there. It's a shame that we have drains sitting on top of sidewalks. A drain don't supposed to be on side of a, on top of a sidewalk. Then the drains sit on the streets. I know y'all supposed to have so many feet within that sidewalk in that drain, but it's not. Just like Mr. Price said, the side of the, um, train tracks, it's ridiculous. The front end of your car are torn up. And that's sad. The parks, the parks, being if you got locks on the gates, they breaking in, them broke the parks apart, Bestie B Hammer Park, it's a shame the tables are messed up back there. When I go back here, I don't see none of that. I don't see none of that. And that's sad. But we all pay taxes in Kenner. We are all paying taxes inside of the city of Kenner, and I think that's wrong for y'all to do us that. Come see where we live at. No, you move in my neighborhood. You move in my neighborhood, and I won't see what you gonna have done in there, because that's not right. And even to the fact that I used to live in Susan Park, it's a shame how that place looks. Code enforcement, I don't know what's going on now with the pandemic, but before you could call and tell them, the yards are torn up because y'all allowing Mexicans, which I'm not prejudiced, parking twenty cars on top of the land. If y'all would get on the landlords and they would stop worrying about money, maybe they'll take care of their properties. That's wrong. It really is wrong. I'm bringing this to you, Mr. Carroll, because you know me and you don't set out. And you know it. I've been telling you about certain things, and certain things haven't got done. I got pictures on my phone where I text you some flooding in that area. I'm sick of it. The young lady next door to me and I lost three cars behind flooding that the drains are not even draining the water off the street. They flat. They not real street. I grew up back there. That's not street. So y'all need to do something about this. One thing I can see is when Mark was in there. Mark took care of business.
Pass, okay. Darrell Price? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Darrell Price, five thirty-nine Salvador Road, Kenner. We've heard a lot of stuff, but I'm, I'm here today because I've seen a lot of different things since COVID.
Sir, if you'd get closer to the mic, we'll hear you.
I've seen a lot of different things since COVID. And if you would just look at, not just here in Kenner, but across the United States, we are so different when it comes down to what color is your skin and where you live. Now, look, we're not playing the race card, but we're speaking the truth. And until that stuff is addressed, we will always have these issues. I think tonight, we just want neighborhoods like the other folks do. That's it. And, and, and Carroll, I'm not here to bash you tonight because we didn't had our rounds, but you told me something at a meeting, uh, with the Christian Brothers Unified in the faith, that you needed participation. Well, my brother, that's what we're giving you now, from the community, participation. We gonna get behind you, but what we're asking you to do is stand up for the people you represent. Okay? I, I understand your position that you're by yourself, but tonight, you're not alone. But what I would tell you is this, and I've always told you in those meetings, never say what you can't do. If you believe in the Most High God, the Bible tells you, you can do all things. Change what you say, and you gonna accomplish what you desire to do. And this, this kind of crowds and backing is gonna stand with you. Okay, so I'm not gonna bash you, but what I am gonna do from this place forward is hold you accountable, man. And I'm gonna come here, and if you're not doing your job, I'm gonna speak. You know? And, and I want to ask the council, when was the last major project done in that district? Anybody could tell me? When? When? You can't. But I bet you if you pull a roll on some other areas in Kenner, you could tell me, because I rode around and seen it. And what I don't understand is why you can do it there, but it's an issue where we are. That's all we're saying, man. Let's be fair. Come on. My children like to walk that park. My daughter, you hear me? My daughter had to call Jefferson Parish Council, it was Byron Lee, to get the, the gazebo top with her, because he was a church member of hers.
Sir, your three, your three minutes is up.
Yeah, but I'm just letting you know, y'all can get it done if it matters to you.
Mr. Gilbert? Mr. Gilbert? I can't, he left? Okay, thank you. Mr. Almorella?
Almorella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, Fifth District, forty-eight years. I'm gonna direct this to you, uh... I would direct this to you, Councilman Hayes. I couldn't agree with you more. It's time to get out of this horrible venue and get back into our council chamber. Now, I want somebody, when I'm done speaking, to give us an estimated uh date when we gonna be able to get back in our council chamber. And why are we not there now? Now, next slide. I wanna extend an open invitation to Joe Stagney, representative of the Ninety Second District, which encompasses part of the Second District in Kenner and the First District. And I want him to come to the next council meeting and explain to the people of Kenner why he was the only member of our office delegation to not sign up for an petition to get the governor to lift those emergency restrictions and open this state up and open up our city. And why Mr. Stagney is content with keeping our time in the press and keeping our people comfortable. Now, if he can come down here for accolades, he can come down here and get that explanation. And I hope all these people, that any person that'll be here, it's it's a way to decide to come down here and accept my invitation. Now, next slide, thirteen B on the agenda. Cox Campbell refused to come before the Jefferson Parish Council yesterday morning and answer questions. They still they known at Jefferson Parish Council. ATG was notified and they evidently refined. We need to look at this contract if they fail to appear and answer these questions and take whatever action gets afforded to us against those tech giants. They've got too big for their britches, and now it's time for you to take it down, baby. Anybody want to add any comments or any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Greg Teft?
My name is Greg Teft, forty seven, one hundred and fifty five, drive in Kenner. The first thing I wanna do is, I don't know Candace Watkins is here tonight, but I wanted to thank her for the presentation of at the last meeting on the Atlanta's deal. I thought that was a great presentation, and that can bring a lot to the city of Kenner. Now, for some of the folks that's here tonight that spoke up, I'm gonna talk about a subject that I brought up many, many times because of the boat issue that took place a couple of years ago when the UDC was passed. We have a lot of codes that says there's no parking on grass, no no blocking driveways. But yet, unfortunately, it's not in just your area, I hate to tell you. It's all over Kenner. We really, I know that code enforcement is working very hard to keep the city clean and straight. But until we can go to a proactive approach to code enforcement, we're gonna continue to have the kind of problems that some of the folks here brought up because it continues. And I I just hope that the council at some, you know, at at some point, that we can find the funding to increase the personnel that is gonna be needed for code enforcement to do just that. Because if we went to a proactive approach, some of the complaints that are being brought up wouldn't be taking place. Also, our parks, a lot of parks need a lot of work. And I know that we're that the Recreation Department has made a tremendous amount of improvements. But it's obvious there's a lot more that needs to be done. And I think, and that's really all over as well. So, we're all in this together, folks. We just gotta find the funding to make some things happen that could make the difference. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alicia Nettles? Cory Nettles? Vanessa Jones? They gone? Oh, you don't, okay. Uh, Darris Williams? He left. Louisa Daniels? She left. Diane Summer, Sumber? Okay. Deborah Storms, Stormis? Okay, David Weathersby?
Five nineteen Webster Street, David Weathersby. So I just wanna, like, like the brother said, mentioned earlier, out of love. It's just um some, a couple of points that I just wanna point out in regards to the leadership of our of our city.
Sir, if you'd get closer to the mic.
Sorry about that. Just a few things that I would like to point out about our leadership in our city. You know, you look at the council, and it doesn't really reflect the demographics of the city. As the city changes, the demographics are changing. And so it leads me to to, like, like I say, the leadership of our our city and what their past performances are and what what accomplishments they've made. Now, in in my community, right where I live, you know, it's a community, black, black community, community of color. And um just some things that I I looked up, I saw about our mayor. And it's not out of hate, but I'm coming out of love. You know, because a lot of times, um, the way the way that we were raised and in our background has a lot of influence on where we're coming from and who we are. You know, I looked at uh the fact that not once have he supported us in a Martin Luther King march. Something as simple as that. But it means so much to the communities of color. You know, for him not to um have the 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 empathy to take time out for something as important as that. You know, in a nation right now that's calling out for equality, inclusion. You talk about in the Christmas, the Christmas in the Park incident where, you know, um, he didn't wanna allow certain ones in the park. You talk about, you know, the infamous Nike ban. You know, you talk about uh the Hispanic Resource Center where the funding was moved. It's not a bashing of the mayor. It's just, it's like because of the the lack of understanding what so basically what I'm saying is that sensitivity training would help a whole lot to understand where we're coming from and where we at. Now, our community is in dire sh- dire straits. We we get no, like one mentioned, affordable housing. We get no uh streets, just the basic fund, the basics, cutting the, keeping the grass cut. You know, it means so much to a community. You talk about the education, the school that's in our community and how it's just going to the to to nowhere. You talk about um uh programs to build and empower our community, and it's missing. And so because you may care about South, South Kenner.
I'm sorry, but your three minutes is up.
We get no love. We get no love. And four hundred and fifty million dollars is about to be invested into Lake Town, and there's zero dollars being invested in South Kenner. So I just suggest some sensitivity training for the whole council because it does not reflect who Kenner is. And it's not out of hate, it's out of love where you can enhance your knowledge about what's going across, going on across the nation. And Kenner is not not uh uh a part of that. We are a part of that. And to better Kenner, you have to educate yourself and come in 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 tune with who you are serving because you are servers. You are not, you shouldn't have a cocky attitude about being a mayor. You should more more humble. You should not not listen, as I heard you speak to one of the councilmen. You should wanna listen. And so thank you. Thank you for your time. I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone. And that's that's what I have to say.
Council Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
I wish Mr. Weathersby would have stayed up there because I I don't know what the accusation was about Christmas Village. But let me just talk about Rivetown. Um, I do believe, since I've been the mayor, and I think Councilman Carroll would agree with me with this, I think we've seen a change in Rivetown. We have not been addressed by anyone, any developer who wants to come into Rivetown and do what they're doing in in uh Lake Town. But since I've been the mayor, we have improved, I think everyone would agree, the um aesthetics, the businesses, everything in Rivetown area. Um, I I don't know what the sensitivity training would be for because I'm I'm trying to sit here and I'm trying to, I mean, educate through some of the comments that were made. Um, I've I've answered Mr. Weathersby before with Martin Luther King Weekend. That happens to fall on when my daughter was in college. She still is in college. That was the weekend we'd always move in. I've told Mr. Weathersby that. I've sent always to Councilman Carroll a representative to be there for that. But I've also challenged Mr. Weathersby in the past publicly and also one-on-one. I would like for him to come out on New Year's Day when I go to the corner, I believe it is Fillmore and Jefferson Highway, and help feed the multitudes. And Jay Bird and Alberta are two individuals that live in the city of Kenner in District One. And we've been very supportive with me and my family doing that. So when you come up to the mic and you're able to point out certain little things, and I come back and I say, yes, but I've done these things, and I've I've defended that before. But if you don't mind, if you could come up and explain the Christmas Village issue, I don't, we were not allowed, we didn't. I'm think, I think your words were, we were not allowed in the Christmas, I don't know. I didn't, I couldn't hear, Mr. Weathersby.
First of all, I I never um addressed the council in regards to the Martin Luther King issue. Maybe it was somebody else.
Oh, no, you said it before. You might have said it on Facebook. I apologize.
But it it it's no big deal. But the whole, the whole thing is that uh across the nation, we we're experiencing the same thing here. And it is always ending up where that the communities of color is ending up with like the short end of the stick. And why is that?
And I I do, I do agree, and I asked you one question, but let me just say this. I do agree with you. We're facing this throughout the coun- throughout the country, throughout this nation. It's very unfortunate. And I was approached by my co-chair of the Economic Development Committee that I appointed, Ms. Sharon Aguilord. I think the audience of District One is familiar with Ms. Sharon Aguilord. A civic leader, someone who served in the District One seat. I appointed her as the co-chair, co-chair of the Economic Development Committee. So some of those things that comments that you're making, I think are a little unfounded.
Well, I mean, you can read it in the in the newspaper. It it's all facts. Every, everything.
No, it's not. It's it's, you're right. It's a fact. She's on the Economic Development Committee. But when you make these accusations, I just, I'm 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 concerned with that because when she came to me in the beginning, when everything was really, really getting bad, I'm not saying it's not bad right now, but when it started in May with George Floyd and all that, Ms. Aguilord reached out with a few District One residents. I don't know if they're here or not. And she asked for me to coordinate something with the Chief of Police. I sat with my CEO, my deputy CEO, the Chief of Police, his staff, some members of his staff, maybe one other person in my staff, at the pavilion in the middle of COVID, all of us wearing masks, and we heard from the District One community. So I I wish you would have had these conversations with me one-on-one because we sat there. We put the concerns of District One, at least those representatives that came to myself and the chief. I do not control the police department, but I had no problem reaching out to our Chief of Police. Our Chief of Police did a fantastic job letting her know and also the residents of District One know. You're not gonna have police brutality in the city of Kenner. You're not gonna have that.
I'm glad you mentioned the police because the police budget is like nineteen, over nineteen million dollars. Why does the police need nineteen million dollars to 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 make the public safety where the crime isn't that raging in the city of Kenner? Those funds could go to, say, like affordable housing, could go to um an economic development program where that we are a part of the development of Rivetown. The reason Rivetown does not flourish like it has the potential to is because it's sitting in our district and in the heart of our district, and we are not inclusive to the development of it. And so I'm not, I'm not upset, and I'm not angry. I'm just a born citizen in the city of Kenner, and it means a lot to me that my mayor, that I pay taxes in this city, believe it or not, regardless of what the paper may put out on me, but I pay my taxes in this city, and my mayor does not reflect, he wants to empower our community. Like the brother said, thirty years he lived on one street without it being paid. And what I'm saying is that you have a council here that is yes-sir to everything that you and and I mean, that does not make a good democracy when you just have yes-men all over and women. But what I'm saying is not out of hate, it's out of love. Remember that. I I have love for you, Mayor.
I I agree, and and you and I go.
I want you to do better because in twenty-two, it's time to vote again. And if um the the, we have disgruntled uh people in the community where the the demographics are growing, then it's gonna be even harder. So all I'm saying is that I would love to sit with you. Ms. Ms. Faucher knows this. She knows this forever. And it's always kind of hard for me to get in touch, but hey, I'm not gonna stop.
Well, my my door is usually open. My door is still open through Zoom or at the pavilion. We'll meet there because obviously we're not meeting with the public right now. We're not meeting with any public. But we will meet with you outside of the office, at the pavilion, or through Zoom. My door has been open to you in the past. I would much rather do these things one-on-one so we can educate each other. But I want you to know, we have heard District One during this time of the year, this season that's going on right now. We have definitely done that. I don't, I don't choose who sits up here. That's not my fault. That's not y'all's fault. That's the people. The people of Kenner choose us to be here, but every constituent in the city of Kenner has always been treated the same. I will absolutely continue to do that from District One to District Five. We continue to do that. We would like to hear from you, but I don't, you stood and answered my question about what we did to the Christmas Village in Kenner.
That was Laffinier's Park when you were on uh the, as a councilman.
What did I do?
And I'm just saying, past performance, so you know a a dog.
What did I do, what did I do in Laffinier Park to the black community?
What what I'm saying is that it was, it was, it was Christmas in the park.
Oh, oh, wait. Okay, hold on a minute. It was holiday in the park. I absolutely changed it.
Holiday in the park.
I absolutely changed it to Christmas in the park, and I still stand behind that. If you wanna crucify me for that, we'll never agree.
It's not, I'm not.
It is Christmas in the park, absolutely. And and I'm proud to say that. I'm proud to say, I'll never agree with you with that one. Thank you.
Says the truth sets you free, and I'm just saying that.
Christmas in the park.
It it it, exactly. You wanted to rename it where that it it did not allow uh certain uh people of faith to.
I didn't, I didn't wanna do it. I did do it, and I'm proud that I did do it.
Right. Exactly.
May I?
Council Chair, may I make a comment also, please? May I? Mr. Weathersby, I think I speak for everybody up here. As the mayor said, we're elected. We chose to run for these seats. There are all kinds of people that contact me on a regular basis and tell me how many good ideas they have and that their wife thinks they should run, but they don't have time to do this. And I've told people, why don't you go ahead and put your name into the race and do this? I think for you to say, we don't ref, we don't care about the city, or exactly how you phrased it, is very incorrect. Because I'm in District Five. There are people of all races, religions, everything else. Everyone that calls me gets a return call. Everyone that emails me gets a return call or a return email. I am, I am constantly talking to my constituents. If your guys not calling you all back, don't cast that on all of us. Because we are all committed to the city and have been since we were sworn in it before that. So we are doing what we can with what we have in the situation as it presents itself on a daily basis. So again, just because I represent District Five does not mean at all that someone in District One or Two or anywhere else, if they call me or my office, they're gonna get a response. I will reach out to Councilman Carroll and ask him for assistance and let him know I've spoken with someone. I sat as an interim at-large person before Councilman Wilmot in that seat. I had people that still call me from South Kenner in different areas that need help, and they get my, they have my number.
We need help in District One, so maybe you can partner with Greg and vote with him on some issues that will make a difference in our, in our district.
Don't paint all of us with the same brush. Because if someone calls me, I don't care who they are, and I've had people that are in this room, and I've had people that come to meetings that beat me up because I was getting the seat and made personal attacks against myself and my family. They get returned phone calls. I voted for things for those people that no one else would have done it. So again, So again, don't come up here and paint us all with that same brush.
Absolutely. And all I said was that if you're out of touch with the demographics of the, of the city, then that's an issue. And so what I'm saying.
But I don't feel like I am because I pay attention to the world around me. And again, District Five.
So you've, so you've seen the condition of District One and you allow that?
Sir, you don't understand the way it flows and the way it works. If streets need to be repaired, you need to be talking to your councilman, and he needs to be reporting it.
Like he says, he's the only voice that represents. So if you don't, if he is the only long ranger and you don't agree with him on things that you know that need to be done in his district.
Sir, we don't vote on street repairs in District One. We don't, we don't. No, no, please listen to me for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
If their street lights out, that has nothing to do with me. That gets reported from his office to the department that needs that, to do that, that work. District Five, if you call me, I'll get it reported. But that does, I have no authority to tell any department to go do something in another district. If Councilman Carroll needs something and it's something that we can assist him with, I can bet, you can bet, and I can assure you, we will assist him in any way we can. And that goes for everyone on the council and every other district.
Well, he needs assistance, and that's why we're here, because there is not.
Well, then I would suggest you set a meeting with Councilman Carroll. Councilman Carroll, feel free to chime in on this. But again, all I'm asking you to do is don't paint the whole council as a group that doesn't care about District One because that's very unfair.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't understand what you're saying, ma'am. Absolutely.
Susan Park.
You want to talk, Greg?
Ma'am, I can't understand anything. I.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Ma'am, this is a council meeting. Please be seated. If you're, if you're called to the podium, you can speak, ma'am. Please use respect. Is there any further comments on the matter? Do you want to speak, Councilman?
Council Chairman.
Most definitely.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Carroll would like to respond. Please refrain from commenting from the audience if you don't have the floor. Thank you, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. President. And first, I mean, there's a lot that has been said that I will try to unpackage as it relates to District One. Some things were said relating to the national, what's going on in the country. But I'm going to, I'm just going to focus my comments and my replies for District One and to address that. And I will say that if, if people disagree with me, I'm a big boy, I can take it. If you want to clap your hands when somebody says something, I get that too. I can take that. I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. You know where I live, and you got my phone number, and you see me in the streets. Stop me whenever you want to, and we can address it. So just let me, let's let me put that out there. But I will like to say for Mr. Price, I appreciate him coming up because we, we have had disagreements on stuff. But he and I grew up together as little boys with his whole family. And as from one man to the other, we will address that accordingly. But I will say, and I appreciate that, Mr. Price, and we will definitely move on, and I appreciate you coming here. But I want to say for Ms. McGee that I am insulted and appalled that she would try to pit me against Councilman Johnson. That is one of the most disrespectful things to do. Don't do that because that is called divide and conquer. And you may have a reason for doing that, or you may think you sound good for doing that, but that is inappropriate. The second is to say Mexicans, District One and the city of Kenner is for everybody. You should be ashamed of yourself for saying that because I'm talking. You've had your chance. Let me finish. I'm talking. You've had your chance. Let me finish. To say that is appalling to all of us, and it should be. Because you would not like when somebody said the N-word to you. So do not speak on that level where you want to pick and choose to talk about people of different race, gender, or sexual orientation. Miss, I, I didn't, I didn't stop you when you were speaking. You have to listen to what I have to say. So that was insulting to speak about our fellow citizens. It's insulting to try to pit me against Mr. Johnson. That is insulting. So if you want to, if you want to address me and say things, I can take it, but don't do that. That is not the thing to do. As far as Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith said some things about me not calling him back. There's no one in here that can say, I have not called him back because I have called you back. You can always say it because nobody's going to know. Mr. Smith know I called, I will call him back. And I have called him back, and I have spoken to everyone. I don't not, do not not call a person back. I may not answer the phone right away, but I'm going to call you back. But I don't want to go into that just to say that, you know, there are, there are multiple for, Mr. Price, there are multiple projects as have happened in District One. I don't want to go into all of them, the food bank, the council of aging, drainage project, drainage projects that we're working on now for South Kenner to the river and all of those. Lincoln Manor, we just got to talking about one from the state. There's, there are a plethora of things, and I could spin here and tell them to you. But if that's not your point why you want to do it because you just want to sensationalize, I'm not going to get into that. We can have a conversation and talk about it. I appreciate Ms. Sonia coming up and Ms. Clay about some of the issues as it relates to, one, the Old Kenner High School. Mr. Smith, you must not have been on the Zoom meeting that we had with the Oakwood Group about a couple of months ago because we addressed that. I addressed that about the Kenner building saying I was in support of tearing it down. I said that there were further information that once I got it from the city that I would share with it. I have been constantly asking about to keep the grass up. So it's not that we haven't forgotten about it, but there were some other things that were going on about that building, and we will address that. But to imply that we haven't addressed that, when I sat in the meeting, in the Zoom meeting with many of you here, we addressed that. I also addressed the old Morgan Playground where many of us played at about what was going on. That they have been, that I would tell every, let the community know when we got an official response for what was going to happen. Because we have gotten to build a school. We have gotten to build homes. We have gotten to build retail warehouses, a number of things because that property has been subdivided into three different partials. Some residential, some light industrial. So there are a number of things, but there is nothing that I can share with you today to say that I know or we know what's going on. Because if I start telling you everything that I hear, it's going to confuse a lot of people. When I get something concrete, it is our responsibility to schedule the meetings. So we're not going to rush it on. We're going to have the appropriate time to have the meetings to that, to give everybody an opportunity, at least a month. So that's, that's not going anywhere that we will be able to do that. As far as, and as far as the trees, somebody mentioned, I'll let Ms. Fauchet address that because that is, that's another subject that she can address. As far as the recreation, we talked about the planning today. A lot of the things we're talking about were just about getting in the area of completing before the COVID. Now, once COVID hit, it kind of put a stop on us. Particularly Bessie Hammond, we talked about the chairs and the gazebo getting changed. That's, that's, that's going to happen. We're kind of right here right now. Some people mentioned about the swings, where part of that was to address the COVID. Because I supported, along with the mayor, along with the Recreation Director, that for all recreation, to be able to stop that so we will not. Everybody in this room, particularly from District One, have had people in our family and friends that was affected with COVID. So we did not want to be a part of something to make it worse. We have lost loved ones. So that will always be a priority about it. Now, getting it done, after we are settled to get this done, we will, we will move on for that. But to imply that I have not addressed that, Mr. Smith, when we were on the Zoom and we talked about all three of those subjects, we talked about the Kenner School. I said I was in the favor of it. I said we, we had to wait for a couple of other things to come in. Ms. Fauchet may want to address that too. I talked about the Morgan Playground. I addressed that too. The parks, not specifically for the equipment, but because of COVID, we've, we've had to pull back a little bit. So I, I look forward to talking to anyone. I don't have a problem. I just, I just, I just don't like people to say, I don't call them back, that I don't do this. And you may have your own reason for saying that, but I do call people back. There's, there are many of things, and to imply that the city, District One, looks awful, I totally disagree with that. The trees have been cut, the, the streets have been cut, the ditches, all of those things have been cut. We still have some to do, but you cannot say that nothing has been cut. Okay, well, let me, let me finish. I didn't interrupt you. Let me finish. Let me finish.
Excuse me.
Mr. Price, I didn't interrupt you. Let, that, that's fine too. But to imply that, to, Mr. Price, I, I'll let you, I'll let you speak, sir.
Sir, sir, you're out of, you're out of order.
Excuse me. What I suggest you all do is meet with your councilmen one-on-one and ask what the capital budget is, how much is in the capital budget, and see eye to eye what needs to be done. This is not the place to solve the problems that we're talking about right now. We hear you. We hear you. But again, do it the correct way. Meet with the councilmen, find out what the capital budget is, how much has been expended in District One, and see where the money's going. We do that with our constituents, believe me.
Thank you. As I was saying to Mr. Price, we have cut Kenner Avenue. We have cut Jefferson Highway. We have trimmed the trees in Lincoln Manor. We have done not a hundred percent of everything, but we have done some things as it relates to the railroad tracks. That is a state. That's the railroad in the state. We have submitted this over and over. They have fixed some of it, but they haven't fixed all of it. But that is an ongoing project to get it done. It's not like it hasn't been reported to, to the representatives and everyone else. But to say that nothing has been done is totally inappropriate to say. To call me a lie when you can, everybody in this room can take a ride down Kenner Avenue, look at the grass on the tracks and the ditches and other places that have been cut. I, don't take my word for it. You do it. Look at, go through Lincoln Manor, look at the trees on Thirty-first Street, some of that. There are some spots, but we're going to get it. So without further ado, there is nothing wrong with me scheduling to talk to people. But we have to be able to take, take and give at the same time. I can listen, and you have to, I would ask that you listen to me also. I'm not running out of this after this meeting. If you have something to say, let's just say it. But let's not, this, you're entitled to your opinion, but not your own facts. That's, that's all I'm saying.
All right, Councilman. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, well, just let me say that, that, that is, that is my opinion, and we will, yeah, we will.
This is not the place for this type of discussion.
I'm closing, I'm closing out. Excuse me, I'm closing out. This is part of the council. They are part of the council. I am closing out. Don't, don't say what I can't say. I am addressing the people. Listen, this is the city's people. This is our, this is our. If you let me finish, then I will finish. I just, just don't interrupt me while I'm speaking. Okay? So with that, I'll be around to talk to people. Ms. Fauchet may be able to address two of the subjects that we said about that. So that's where I'm at. I'm not going anywhere. If there are some things you disagree that I said, I'll be here to be able to address that, and I look forward to the conversations.
Madam Clerk, are there any other people that wish to speak?
No, sir.
Councilman Segura.
The amount of money in the District One council capital account.
Listen to this answer very closely.
He's going to get, he's pulling it up. Give him a chance. I want you to know what's in that capital budget for District One.
I have sixty thousand dollars left in my capital expense. When I took office, I had over three hundred thousand. We've spent that money on projects.
Council, Council Chairman. I think what we should.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think what we should direct this to is my CEO. I've told her already. She wants to do a brief, a very brief comments. I think, and I've just, I noticed that my good friend, Sharon Aguiloyd is in the crowd. I just told her the same thing. I'd like to go do a community meeting with you and I, obviously the two at larges, somewhere in District One, social distance, guys, social distance, everybody wearing a mask like we're doing here, and go over the things that we're actually having in the capital budget throughout the city of Kenner, particularly in District One. Because I could tell you this. I mean, Greg, you know this. Look, we don't agree on the budget, but that's, that's one thing. But we have agreed on numerous things that you and I are working on, absolutely positively working on with Byron Lee. Byron Lee is going to help us with a very major project. Byron Lee is going to help us with the Lincoln Manor issue. He's going to help with a lot of things in District One. I think we probably, because of COVID, we have not done the best communication getting that out. And I'm not saying just me. I'm saying you and me and probably the two at larges. Because it seems like you and I are the only two getting beat, well, I only got beat up by one person, and that person was a little bit off. But you're getting beat up, and look, that's something with you, with the District One residents. But as the mayor of the city of Kenner, I have not let District One go without. I would like to sit down with all of you all. I'd like to have a PowerPoint presentation with you all, with the CEO, of course, you too, Greg, and the two at larges because the two at larges do represent you also, just like myself and Greg Carroll do. What's, what's uncommon practice is that this council, and I think Brian was probably going there, that this council would spend the District One money. Not saying that we can't. It's just not appropriate. But maybe, Greg, you need to spend some of that money, and maybe that's something I need to help you with identifying more of that. And I'm willing to do that, but let's also first talk about some of the capital projects. It's getting late. There's kids outside for drunk or treat. I'd like to come back and do that in a, in a town hall meeting. But how many capital projects are going to District One? Just, just say the number. Just give me a number. Go ahead. Go ahead.
You have to turn your mic on.
Weathersby. Okay, somebody make sure he watches this film because I got to say, he's hurt a girl's feelings.
We're not going to hold it up for David Weathersby. They have numerous other District One residents that have not gotten personal. So I'd like to actually hear, let them hear what, what we have going on in District One.
David has my number. So he's hurt a girl's feeling but not calling me before he got here. Had David called me, and I say this out of love for him, I would have told him the following things have gone to the state this year for funding. We sent one point six million dollar request for Lincoln Manor Drainage Phase Two, one point two million dollar request for Lincoln Manor Phase Three, Compromised Drainage Improvement, one point three million, Susan Park Drainage, one point two million, the big one, which has a lot to do with what's going to happen to that school, Pump to the River, thirteen million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Improvements at Twenty-fourth and Delaware, that's a little north of you, South Kenner Drainage Improvements, two point three million dollars, and the Buddy Lawson Concession Stand, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. All of those have gone to the state this year saying, guys, can you give us some money? You know, in years past, we haven't focused that much on infrastructure. And in years past, we've gone fourteen, fifteen years and haven't gotten a dime. Well, we're being told right now by the legislators, hey, this is the kind of thing we want to fund. So I, I can't say anything about what has happened in the past. What I can tell you is sitting here today, this matters. This matters to us, and this is the information we've gone to the state with saying, these are our priorities. Other stuff could be priorities. This year, they're not. This is what we need to do. So we have commitments from a couple of them for at least Susan Park, Lincoln Manor One, Lincoln Manor Two, and South Kenner Drainage. I would love to have a chance, like you said, a PowerPoint, to give you all more details about that. I really would.
And, and I think that's what we need to do, but in defense of the rest of this council, it's wrong for anybody to come up here and expect this council, four people at least, to vote against a district councilman. So I don't think it's the whole council's fault. I know it's not, and it's not this administration's fault. What you hear on there is administration working with the council as a whole to deliver what they need to deliver, like Brian said, across. When they, when they all vote, they all voting for District One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. So I don't think anybody on that council is doing that, including the two at larges.
Are there any other comments, concerns, questions?
I haven't got the answer to my question yet.
Mr. Weathers, we can't hear what you're saying.
We currently have four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. We currently have $423,000, but there's a secondary, what do you call it? Uh, no, when you, encumbrance. There's a secondary encumbrance for the Buddy Lawson Concession Stand of $667,000 in the event that we don't get state funding. We're hoping we get state funding because that's the smallest item we have on the list. So somebody ought to think, oh, well, 30 million, that's a lot, but maybe we'll give you 600. So we're hoping for that. But there's an encumbrance right in there now of 667, 167, 128 against a 423. See, overdrawn, my friend, by $200,000. You need a bake sale. That's where we are with him.
All right. Any other questions? Do I hear motion to adjourn? Please. Thank you, Councilman Bernigan.